The amount and trying to stay diligent on them. Uh, getting everything. Hold up. And, and meeting with specifications.
I mean.
Outside observation, we cleaned up about four miles of. I never seen a river there once, which in my opinion, that's what they should do, but I can honestly say any drainage clean up that I've ever seen. I've never seen a river there. I don't care what contractor has done it ever. It's always been a filled elevator. Those are a lot of stuff there. Yeah, there was a lot of stuff there. They're side of those stuff. Um. But there's also a lot of stuff on the side of them dishes that have been there for a hundred years and dirt, water heaters, just appliances to. Give you damage. I mean, I have only got nine times. Um. I, I totally believe that any contractor that doesn't support you to be rip or hybrid to be done. But I don't know what ever happened, but like I said, it never happened. But at the end of the day, it did. I don't know. I'd say a fair job, but there was a lot of stuff there. There's an awful lot of stuff there. But there was some stuff there before we started doing, and I'm not going to say it weren't. And banks, we find that cleaned up the last time there and asked you a lot of things too. I mean, we ran rock picker on both sides, like a whole hundred percent like. Kind of the same thing. I don't know if there's. It is what it is. And the same with the level one issues. There's always spots that are never perfect. I think everybody's got that along the whole four miles we did. We can still take the ghost, probably get this fall and clean up a lot of stuff. I think there's spots that are way out. That part of looking back, Rich did do anything.
And, and that kind of. Highlights that, I mean, this is the edge of a dredged ditch. We have right of way along there. Uh. We're not required to pay crop damages for the area in the right of way, even though those are included in the report currently. Uh, so I, I feel in, in some forms would be. Fair, if not generous to the people along the ditch in that category. Because that's not a requirement.
So what is the random way?
Hundred and fifteen feet.
On the side of the creek.
Told the last fifty seven and a half.
Fifty seven and a half each side or center.
There are ditches that are different than that also.
They're not all the way. Not all over the same, but.
We put Lincoln off pack one.
They're not all the same kind.
You had a rock pick and as far as I'm concerned, just the people that picked rock either. Party, which was a contractor, I believe either he paid his own pick up the rock or he paid the people to pick up. I mean, some did. Pick the rock up. I mean, that's all there is to it.
Yeah.
I mean, the rock got picked up one way or another.
Yeah.
Can you explain where the, the nine hundred something dollars for Raisel was created?
That was a, a damage of invoice that, uh. Rich submitted for having rifle blow and leveled spots in his. Uh, along the bank that.
Well, I didn't even know what that bill was, Kyle.
Yeah.
Kyle and I talked and he did get rights.
And that was.
We were ready to plant it. Hadn't been liable to get that out there. Also, I went to drill over it over it.
That was, that was because it was on their, um. Final punch list. They came through and did not do what they were, um, supposed to do. So. Who else touched up because, because.
That area, the request for additional leveling. As Rich said, they, they tracked through it. Not sure they ever dropped the blade. So.
Then they decided off setting it up.
All of course, they banked off there. Or rights look good in that, in that area as well. If that was also on. We were notified of that and then, and then they did.
That comes off contractors.
That would be my recommendation on, on those leveling. On the leveling bills.
Well, you want to keep on going?
Uh, yeah.
One more, one more issue was this. And it's never noticed because. Once they went and dug it out and. Somewhat leveled, they held all that rocky, all that rock. Some of it came from both directions. A lot of the rocks ran farther across. Two or three. Individuals and farms before it got to where they used it. Because it was all a mile and a lot of it was. Chrome was dark and gone by the land. That's a lot of action on this ground. The rootings, they never did come back. We did. We ripped all of ours last fall and that's where the large fall came from. We, we picked up last fall. We picked up again this spring after we still got away. Just it just no way.
Rich, were the, uh, John Deere bills factored in or were those? In addition, were they?
Probably, probably in addition.
They're all, they're, they're included there. Field cultivator repair parts.
Okay.
Eight, seven.
Their factor isn't there, but this is just where those values came from.
Yeah.
Okay. It's receipts to verify them. Yeah.
The rest of it. Perkage.
Right. And then March handed me here as we were going. These are the. This appears to be, uh.
I just turned that here today.
Verification for the.
The corn, it's area. I got thinking Neil for better than two hundred bunch of acres last year. I. I had somebody go in and. Lock off the balance of the end rows. For someone batched acres that we couldn't unfarm and we got the yield off from that area. And, and then I. I ended up. And that's going to reveal for what, what I felt I would have had on those acres that I would have had gone there. Farmed to someone ever. We used only a couple of bushels every time. I didn't, I didn't pursue that.
Those are the, and then there are some additional leveling. Was this what you were speaking of when you were going into this?
And that's for I, I felt last spring when. Damon had to go in and level before he would take these trucks sitting there to haul the dirt out. It should have been done better than that. And, and they never did really come back and do it. It would have been done there. We have done. And I'm responsible for it now, I feel, because we're taking dirt off from it. So I'm not asking. And that I'm just asking, it should have been lovely enough to eat when there's hard all the dirt. That's the one value. The other is an estimate for what he is, but he told me up on, on the Harrison's. Project, the dirt is, is, is failed home. And, and in the end, I'll have to overlook there, feather it out into the field further. Because when you. When you come to the bottom. Going to be someone with gully there. I don't know what to expect. I just thought I turned it in if. If possible, I'd like to compensate for part of it because it's. It's not the way that it was.
So, so that's on top of, that's for the same farm?
It's just turned in the.
So that, but that's the same farm that Raisels were out there on?
Yes.
Okay.
They were out there and they did a good job. But there's still a couple of places up along the dredge when I get planted. That Murphy, I know when I talked to him, he said, they did a good job and I can't expect it to be perfect.
Yeah.
But I am going to go in and build to it should be done this fall. Uh, whatever happens on that.
Tyler, do you want to give your opinion on those or do you want me to say anything or?
I. Spoke in my piece a little bit about the. So I guess in the liv- leveling.
I guess I'll go on, I'll start on Greenwood eleven. Um. I don't feel we can have a perpetual district expense. I mean. When, when I asked you if it was good after Raisel's did it, you said it was and. I didn't go out there specifically because you said you were satisfied with it, but I feel we kind of need to draw a line.
It's farm.
Uh. The one for your home section for leveling it out before they went out with trucks. Um. I guess in all the times I was out there, I don't know that I would have considered it where you would have rolled the truck. Um, but if that was the case. Um, McCarty should have been given the option to do that before, um, someone else was hired. So. I, I would struggle with that one as well. Cause I wasn't, I wasn't aware they leveled anything out on that until now, even after.
There was dirt being hauled off before we prepared it back in here.
And that's, that's where with, with the dirt being hauled off. Um. I also think we can need to draw a line there because we, it can't be a district expense for that. Um, activity either, in my opinion. So. I don't, I don't know what the board thinks on that, but.
If it would have been done last fall, I would have supposed to have done. Wouldn't have been next.
But their contract didn't until the spring technically, so.
Project was done, I think, November. But, so what is my opinion?
Any thoughts from the rest of the board?
You've seen more than I did. I didn't really.
Yeah, I'm.
I haven't been on Richard's ground.
Okay, I, I guess my opinion is I would not support either of those two for leveling. Um, the one for Raisel's. Definitely yes. Do we need to go through these item by item? Are you taking notes of them?
I'm taking notes, um. But I'd like to, I'd like to see them all addressed item by item. Just we. I know that's going to take more time, but that's going to be the most, we're, we're dealing with some precise things here. So.
Yeah, um. You need a. A formal vote or just discussion here, I guess.
I think, I think formal, formal votes.
On each item?
Well, or, or on each. Summation of, of items.
Well, summarize what you're, what's all.
I, I probably have these in a different order than you do. Um, I printed them out in the order there in our folder. So the first one I have is the valuation of land said not appropriate time for that claim. Um, the next one I have is. The white or yellow labeled six, two, twenty twenty-three with leveling, field cultivating, picking up rocks. And I guess parts after that, um. The next one I have is changing corn from buffer. Then Raisel's. Invoice, then the. Two field maps for yield. And then, um. Estimate from rollings. And then the full yellow page versus six, two, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
So summarize it. We have the yield. For, you want to yield and.
I don't.
Corn makers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of that.
And Raisel's bill.
Yeah.
You're in support of that. Which other bill are you in support of?
I think we should talk like the leveling, picking up rocks, um. That, in my opinion, should be handled fairly for everyone. Um. There was a lot of rocks on the project that they did pick up. There obviously are some left after.
Yeah.
Is it? The consent to the board to pay those claims as submitted or a fraction of them or none of them? For cleanup? Yes. I don't, I mean, to the comments earlier, the rocks were picked up, so I don't have a problem. Paying for it in that regard, but we also do need to draw a line and. And close the project out, which this hearing would do. So.
Where do you want to be on picking up rocks?
With the unique situation of. The slope change and some of that, I'm. I'm okay with paying those claims, um. Because of the situation, but. Um. I also don't feel that should come out of the contractor's retainage, except where there was ripping, um, for Mike Kaler's. That they would have been required to do. Um. So. There's kind of two pieces to that. Normal rock picking, I would say would be a damage. For the district expenses, rock picking and leveling as a result of contractors. Non-performance of work, I would say would be out of the retainage, in my opinion.
So as these bills apply, Raisel's bill would come out of retainage.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's how I hear it.
And, and Rich's invoice for. Two thousand fifty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents for picking up and leveling this spring.
That would also come out of retain.
That would come out of re.
Yes.
Uh. This.
The.
Half page.
Yep, yep.
They want that and the nine ninety on retainage.
Yep. And then. Good with changing the buffer to corn because that would have been corn.
But that won't come out of, you know, let's do retainage after this.
Um, I believe that's it for.
That's it. So retainage, isn't it?
Yep.
Sure. Wait, we can be provided a copy of this of, of the crop damages.
Um, we have to get it all done first.
My landlord here and, um. He does not have that. I have seen it as a tenant. I just wanted to make sure there was no admission. You know, where I had, Dan, would you have that, Rich? The scrap as a buffer, I, I just don't agree. Yes.
Yeah, that's, that was all I recorded.
You just have my copy of that. That's all the tabulations that are attached, matched back behind it.
It, then the, then the full page, I would say would be a, um, damage claim to the district, not out of the retainage.
Let's do retaining. Retaining would be Raisel and the two thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, wait, 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 wait. The, the last back page is the summated values from this page. He's got all of his items itemized and then with the sums totals.
Oh, they were.
So then, then he simplified it by putting it all on the back page here.
And so then both of them, that, that works.
So it's, it's, it's double listed, but it's itemized first.
Yeah.
Okay, now that you're confusing all of us all.
I'm sorry. Do you get what I'm?
I, I mean, this, this page is a detailed summary of this page.
Yeah.
So we're not paying it twice.
No.
Um.
So what is the total dollar figure that's going to come out of retaining?
Two thousand fifty-nine dollars, twenty-seven cents.
Three thousand.
Plus Raisel's nine ninety. Yep, yep. You got it. You got that too, Tyler?
Is the, it's the two thousand, uh, fifteen hundred dollars, twenty-seven cents plus the nine ninety.
Yeah, the three thousand. Forty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents is going to come out of retainage and I would entertain a motion for that.
I would take that motion.
Mr. Spector makes the motion. I'll second, second by God. All in favor, say aye. All motion carried.
We've got a lot of interpretation.
We're just keep going.
Okay. So we're done with Rich's.
And because, and the, the change, we can do the change to all the damages at the end.
Yeah.
But that, we're okay changing that to corn.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll do that in one motion when we're done.
Good.
Yeah, there, there was a mistake on, on, uh, God, there, there, one of these, I, I have tracks and. One. On the north side of that, uh, three acre farm that would be. I can see the tracks all taken.
Hey. Um. If you were able to look at the, the tracks and add the data here, but, uh, but all, all it really needs to be is.
Every sign of sheet of paper.
It has to be a time sheet that would like to change. You'd like the correct track changed to be. That's all it has to be. It doesn't have to be yet.
Do you want to do, um, raise next?
Uh, yes, we can do. A raise.
Just your part of the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um.
But we.
Um, you can get the, uh, yeah. What tracks it looks good.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we do have to be out of the hearing for that. So.
But for them to discuss anything, they have to bring it up now.
So you pretty much have to make a no.
So is there?
We're going to make decisions.
We'll make the decision when we come out.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll agree on it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we agree on this, so we'll do the move, go on, when we come out.
Well, yeah, we'll act on it.
Um. Go back in the minutes and say to you, you know, the hearing was still open, action was not valid or something to that extent.
Yeah, I don't know. We're going to have to get done with some of this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or if we go too long, we're going to have to take the longer.
Motion was he held?
We were in, uh, the north side until both of the year. The track on the north side.
Motion to be held. But we have to go down some.
All right. So next we.
You all the way down there.
Well, you have some of the signs. We have to address these in the hearing.
Well, well, well. They have to, they have to be presented during the hearing. Is there any further claims? Um, that have not been turned in in writing already?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, but even these, we should have people be able to. Address their claim in this hearing. While it's open.
Correct.
Right. So we have to continue. We will not make any formal decisions until the meeting is closed.
Oh, okay. Yes, I, I got you. I, I now I'm.
Okay.
You're on stage. You confused me. I'm back, I'm back with you.
Okay.
So you, you made those motions and everything, but that, just that they close. Gotcha.
Well, we'll make the official then.
Got it. All right. Next is the claims from the Rays. I have a leveling invoice from Raisel of one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. And a, a repair request that goes with them. And then presenting the bills to the supervisors of Conused County attached. Transistor four, when they cleaned the ditch, they ruined our CRP ground. That we have with the government and also three rows, three rows of corn from last fall. Finally, Cal Snicker was able to get, uh. Raisel excavating into smooth off the three banks. We worked it and picked up rocks and then seeded it back down again. We don't have the drills, so had a hybrid done. Finally got the seed in between the reins on June fourth attachments. Images to our corn ground. Section nineteen, ninety-eight north, twenty-eight west from last fall, three rows. In the CRP ground, about two acres, two acres times two hundred bushels times six point. Uh, six dollars and eighty cents was a value of two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Proceeding to the CRP ground, six bags of mix. Six times a hundred dollars, six hundred dollars, one bag of oats at a value of thirteen dollars for a total of six hundred and thirteen dollars. And my eight o drilling seed for the CRP ground, six acres by forty-five dollars for a value of two hundred and seventy dollars. Then they had the. Of just, just more of the same for what those.
The receipts.
Yes, values were. Yep. So if we were being uniformed, the. One thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents would come out of the retainage and the additional damage claim would be. The damage for crops would be. Uh, what I'm imagining is in lieu of what the report.
And it did that.
In addition.
I believe.
In addition.
Said, they said outside from the CRP, so I believe it would be in addition.
And they went further than the right away.
Past the CRB.
Okay. So the crop damage would go to the district because they went past the district boundaries.
I, I would say all of the, um. Summary of that first page, uh, with the twenty-seven, twenty, six, thirteen and two seventy would be. Regular damages to the district. Then the seventeen, eighty-two, fifty from Raisel's would be out of the retainage. Would be. I have Brian Cruz's next. I don't know who you have. Yep, Jeff Diderm, what's that?
I can, I can give it to him. I can get to Cruz's. What's it, what, what does it, Cruz's look like?
It's a letter on the beginning, then, um, some grass, hay stuff and pictures. And field reports.
I'm answered. Okay. Thank you, March. I don't, I did not, didn't have it. Next is from Brian Cruz, dressing the dangerous scene parcels, ten, twenty-five, four hundred, zero, four during D D four project. When you call a buffer, it is not, the grass area on the farm is a hayfield and hay production. The estimate of acres. A soybean's loss is almost half of what was. Unharvested due to construction. There is also the issue of excessive compaction due to the amount of machine hours running across the parcel. All machine and machines and trucks that did work on the next three parcels north drove across the parcel instead of using the entrance. On those parcels, not all machines and trucks stayed on the easement when they had the ability to. We also had tile and drainage tubes left in an unorganized manner all over the parcel. And at times the wind would blow these around and damage the crop. The storage trailer was also set in the parcel. Was not removed in the timeframe that was agreed upon and was not properly blocked up and sank so heavy. Some more heavy machines were brought in to help with removal and caused more compaction and long-term damage to the soil structure. We also experienced more compaction this spring when a machine was allowed to travel through this parcel to do work on a parcel to the north. With, with its own access. In closing, we believe we should be duly compensated for the excessive damage this parcel experienced when most of them were avoidable. Two point nine acres hayfield. Cost to receive three hundred dollars. Loss of revenue, one thousand three hundred and five dollars. Total damage for hayfield, one thousand six hundred and five dollars. One point six acres of soybeans, total damage of one thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Soil structure damage due to excessive compaction is fifteen, one thousand five hundred dollars. Total damage due four thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and zero cents, Brian proves. Then there are attached. Documents. To support those claims.
Do you want to give your?
Yeah, that, the, the, the crop damages. It is. My opinion on, on all of these crop damages, that's, that's part of the projects and is compensated through the district. On those, uh, the soil compactions. There's. There are some there and some, some that are more defendable than others. Uh, certainly having the, I'm. Uh certainly having the, I'm, I'm well aware of the trailer issues. On the pipes as well, we, we draw on them quite a bit. About all of that. Uh some of, some of the compaction I see as being part of the, the project and, and, and access, however, not all of that. Do you have an idea in your mind what a split for that would be, a difference in?
No, because that's figure three, that's half of the this year's income on three acres. And what that figures out.
That's what that.
So I mean, I could, I could triple that and go for three years damage.
Okay, so that, that's where you're coming up with the.
Right, because where the trailer was parked and we left six feet for them to park their trailer because it was supposed to be off before we planned. It wasn't, we left them sixty feet to work with. But instead of driving in that sixty feet down to the easement and along the ditch bank, they took a direct angle across the field. Multiple times. Everything that went on, all the rock trucks that went to the north come through there and didn't stay on the east. I mean, it was excessive. The day I sprayed my beans, the second week of June last year, there was, I know they were training the guy in the donozer, but he drove my quarter mile of ditch bank, five times up and back, so ten trips, and never once put the blade down. So I mean, I understand you gotta teach somebody how to drive. Do it on your own ground.
Underst- understood. I would say with the uh with what I know from the Cruz property and uh testimony there, I suppose. Uh it would be my recommendation that the, the crop damages, the district expenses, the fifteen hundred due to excessive compaction be a contractor.
Retainage.
A retainage.
I, I would agree with that.
You have it.
Yep.
Uh I could do, I, I got a, an email from Marge uh from uh Richard and Pamela Marin, is that correct? But uh I think this one would be, I don't know if this is a good package, but I think this one could be rather quick. Um has made the claim that they only had buffer for crop damage, did not think you should have corn for damages, thought that it may be too much money. Being assigned to parcel eleven nineteen three hundred zeros or three and eleven nineteen one hundred zeros or six. So though it is asked for a reduction, it's an objection all the same. And I, I guess it was a, a request to Marge, it isn't. Guess it's not technically signed by them, but it, Marge, how, or Marge or Tammy, do we?
Do you have the report? He knew how much it was there. I could, it's like filled up here too.
Um actually, like.
I know.
My reporter, Richard. Thank you.
They added two. Okay.
The values for corn on those were four thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents and four thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and forty cents.
I guess they're asking for the reduction, so it was I would support it, I guess. Um I know we, a lot of our focus was to reduce crop damages, so. But that was, that's a change in crop type, right?
It, it would be a change in crop type from the corn to a, to a buffer. It wouldn't be a total removal, it would just be a reduction in.
And that was on both parcels, not just the one?
Uh correct, yes. It's, it's a request on, they've made it on two parcels that were listed as corn.
Okay. That's already buffer, so it'll stay.
Okay.
No. Okay, did you have Dieterings next?
I'm getting to Dieterings. The Greenwood section thirty-six, correct?
There's multiple.
Right, it's the, it's the, oh yeah, it's Dieterings.
But yeah, that's one page, actually. That's the back page for me, but.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't matter the order.
You wanna do Greenwood thirty-six, it's fine, we can do the other one there.
Yeah, so there is a uh request for fence line repair, uh wire, labor, steel posts, wood posts for a value of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
That was due to fence being taken out for access for the contractor.
And that would be typical uh a district expense for replacement.
Yep. And the, the rock that was hauled in um due to damage from the riprap being hauled in would also be for access and stuff as well.
Right, that would be a, a replacement for, for access. That's uh in my opinion also a district expense.
What's the amount?
Two thousand nine oh four.
Yep, twenty-nine oh four, point six eight.
Sixty-eight.
And the fence line repair was seven fifty.
Yeah.
And we have the one in the middle, yeah, box paper and leveling that should come off of the contractor's retainage.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then we have the one in the middle for um leveling and cleanup um out of the retainage. To be consistent with that.
That would be being consistent throughout?
Yep. And that's that was section ten, three, fourteen.
Section thirty-six, yeah.
Oh, this one. Middle of the range.
Okay, then we got the other.
Yeah. We have section ten, his home place, which is their lawn, their house is right along the ditch.
Sure.
Um it's listed as, I think, point two acres in the report, but it's obviously a different situation than the edge of field or a buffer strip. It's their personal residence, so that's why he has a specific bill just for that. The dirt had to be hauled off because otherwise it would have destroyed a large portion of their yard. And then seed and rock cleanup. I'm in full support of that with the situation.
For the, for the good uh district damage, correct?
District expense, yeah.
The twenty-seven, twenty-five.
No, four seventy-five.
Okay.
Then we'll go to that one next.
Got to me, Jeff Dieter.
Yeah, then um cleanup activities for section ten, three, fourteen and eleven um. Being consistent would be taking that out of retainage. And then he's got maps for their CRP contracts and acres. Those are all um or for varying degrees in the report, so that's requesting an acre adjustment.
The increase in the.
CRP.
CRP.
First.
That.
And they are listed out per parcel and stuff on the maps with locations and all that.
That, got all those squared away. Right? Hey. What do you have up next?
I have Ed Stein's.
Okay, from Ed Stein, it's a quest for one thousand two hundred dollars for deep tillage through passes. Four hundred and fifty dollars for rock picking. And a request of eighteen lost acres of crop damage.
Do you wanna start with the crop damage? What's that?
He's got disposal.
Uh and, and then, yes, and then uh uh is this the, the second page?
Yeah.
For uh disposal of the rocks, uh value of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The comment I'll make on this one is the request for eighteen acres of crop damage seems excessive. That's nearly twice what the other.
That's more than double, is it?
Right, yeah. Uh it, it, yeah, it's not nearly twice, it is twice what was measured for damages in that area.
So you did measure, how many did you?
And there was, there was.
Eight point six. Eight point six.
Yeah, um. Knowing the situation that happened here, there was crop harvested along the ditch before the spoil was leveled out, which is in line with the delay in leveling that we had in other areas, hence the time extensions and all that. But he's claiming the acres where the spoil was leveled out into the field as crop damage when the crop was actually harvested, so that's kind of getting paid twice for the same thing, so I would, I would not support that change.
So you're gonna go back to the eight point six acres of crop damage?
I, I recommend no, no change in that. Uh however, to be consistent with everything else. The uh.
The detail that she has three passes there, the contract only requires two.
At split hairs.
Yeah.
At a certain point, but.
Just wanted to discuss that um.
I could find the other way. Same way with all in the rock, uh.
Yeah.
With Charlie's bill, I'm fine with that. Yeah. They go along with regular damages, don't you? Or you wanna take that out of the contractor?
Well, it's this one, this one is a little different as I had, I had, I had asked Ed not to go out there and, and do the work without having the contractor have the opportunity to do it. Uh that's a conversation I had with him late last fall and the, the work was performed and the bill submitted. Um so without even having given the contractor an opportunity to do it. The, the work was performed. I, I don't disagree with that. I, I know he, he went and did the work and how he's, it's just how he gets compensated for that and if that's really at the contractor's fault for having not had an opportunity to do it.
I would, I would say the the twelve hundred dollars for deep tillage would be different in that sense. The invoice uh for nineteen fifty, that was, the timeframe of that was the spring, so they had a lot of opportunity to do that before that work was preformed. Um so I would support that coming out of the retainage. The rest, I would say, should be separated out from that, though.
Nineteen fifty from retainage and everything else.
District.
Desert.
District damages, yeah.
The twelve hundred and the five fifty, correct?
Uh four fifty.
Yeah, four fifty.
Which he's got a total there that's not accurate, but yeah.
Oh yeah, he, cause he's got the tillage and the retainage.
And it's also, it's also not payable to him. That goes to the landowner.
Right, we should make that, so it's on the record, those damages go to the landowners, not the, the tenants. It's for the tenants, need to have the discussions with the landowners to be compensated how they see fit. Because the auditor's office doesn't have a rent, all the.
Yeah.
Tenants are.
That's standard operating procedure. Next one I have is uh Mike Taylor.
All right, from Mike Taylor. There was an amount for tractor and ripper of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And he put a value of rock picking two people, skid loader and fuel and for the, for the, just for the labor, it was one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. For the machinery, it was two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. For a total of a total on everything of four thousand five hundred dollars. And this was.
Total on everything would be forty-eight, seventy-five.
That's what we got, forty-eight, seventy-five.
Oh, yeah. All right, I would hit the uh three seventy-five, not.
Yep.
Three seventy-five came in because they hauled riprap over the top of it and packed the heck out of it.
Yeah.
Or did anything do, maybe did, so that should come out of retainage.
Yep, right.
Yes.
Yeah, and the forty-five hundred should be district expense, I would say. Um some of those rocks could have been for ripping it, but it's hard to put a split on that. I don't think they all would be from ripping one time.
And also from Mike. There was a request for approximately one acre of corn from Harrison section twenty-eight of the list that this is in addition or or how he would like that figured. I would imagine it would be in addition to what's in the report.
Drop, yeah.
But that's, that's speculation only that.
That's in your report. On crop damage, correct?
What's that?
That's in your report on crop damage. Or that, eh, more than what you had in your original?
And that's what I'm, I'm looking for, but.
Is that?
He's, he's.
Helen Paulson?
Yes, Helen, okay.
So that would be, it's got three point nine one right now, so it's probably in addition to that, um because otherwise it would be less.
I would assume that you're correct.
I didn't, I don't have an objection to, to adding an acre.
Yeah.
There.
I think that's what he means.
Right.
Yeah, I would. I'd be fine with that. I'd be fine with that. Who got next?
Last that I have in hand here is from McNerney's. There was a letter submitted for the reimbursement for bridge planks in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars. Do you like the full letter read into the?
Yes.
End of the rap.
Uh, I, I would take care of it.
Yeah, I, I can read it. Yeah, that's fine. Perfect, thank you. So this is regarding compensation requested for the negligent removal and or inversion of treated bridge planks from the property of Donald E. McNerney by subcontractor sometime in May of twenty twenty-two. Letter of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, attached as exhibit one, here, Mr. McCarty. On June tenth, twenty twenty-two, we discussed the above referenced incident by telephone. This letter follows up a conversation varying the negligent removal and or conversion of the subsequent apparent destruction of the treated bridge planks by your subcontractor Zach Lupenthal or by other acting under his authority from the drainage ditch area of my father, Donald E. McNerney's farm located at thirty-seven oh nine one hundred and twentieth avenue, just north of Bancroft, Iowa, five zero five one seven, sometime in May of two thousand twenty-two. The incident was detailed in the letter sent to you on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, a copy which is attached here to exhibit one. We implied with Iowa code four sixty-eight one oh two, informally advising both your company and the board of supervisors of Cassin County or are planning for damages of the loss of our property stemming from the negligent removal and or conversion of this property during the repair work of the main ditch by the above referenced subcontractor. At no time was permission from the owner sought or even an attempt made to contact the owner or his agents. And the removal of this property would, has caused considerable loss and damages as it was slated to be reused in other farm-related projects. Since the time of our previous phone conversation, uh, substantial efforts have been made to contact the Merriman Bridge Company. I constructed the bridge sometime in the mid nineteen eighties. We've learned from Merriman the number and kind of planks that were used in the bridge's construction. And after consulting with local lumber companies, we reached the replacement value of the wood planks to be approximately six thousand five hundred dollars. Therefore, a demand of this amount is hereby made to you. Payment should be made to the account of the Donald E. McNerney Revocable Trust. Check should be sent to my attention at the New Mexico address listed below, no later than thirty days from the receipt of this letter. But in any event, no later than October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Sincerely, Patrick McNerney, Esquire. Do you like me to include the exhibit A, uh, letter as well, or does that cover the, the issue in exhibit A should be?
Okay.
Although exhibit A doesn't have to be read. Okay, yeah, okay. That's what I'm asking. Do you want, do you want me to, do you want me to read it or, or are you satisfied? Satisfied.
And then, did you have a change for the crop?
Uh, yes, then there was also a request. Please change the, uh, crop farm from bumper to beans on the north side of Donald E. McNerney Revocable Trust, changing the payment rates. That was the at hand, it was difficult to tell exactly what tracks that was, but it was all of their land on the north side of the drainage ditch that has been requested for change.
How many acres is that? You know, which?
I can, yeah, I can do my best here to, to get that.
Is that the point three four? Let's separate out.
I like revisit that, it's my one. About three acres.
The total for those would be over five between, well, I don't know which sections, is, is it section fourteen for just that stuff? You'd be at four point eight three, so that is, that is over your acres there.
Well, it's unclear because they, the, uh, the bumper itself is, is about, is about four point three, but it's the, the north side. You had about sixty feet that were affected on the west side too. The linear length isn't as much as south side, but.
So I'm, I'm guessing that's the point five two acres, Tyler?
The what will, what will be difficult, what will be difficult to tell and to give a split breakout is that because these parcels span the, the north and the south of the, of the drainage, but it is one parcel.
Okay.
It's, our values are, are summed together. What that, uh, what that zero point three four, that formula is, is, is that that little little chunk there that is, uh, is called to with the dot? That's where that, because it's a separate parcel of piece, that's where that comes from. Or everything else, uh, with, without having, without going back to the, the office and actually splitting what those acres are. It's because uh, essentially, uh, this side and that side are summed together. And this side and that side are summed together. So it would be all that north, the north portion of the blue there that we're looking at, that would be the split. So approximately half of what those approximately half of it would be in section those in section fourteen, correct? I believe that's fourteen, yeah. Yeah, so that the the portions in section fourteen would be half of that, just whatever the north half of that was approximately. So it would be the point four, two point four seven, that one.
Uh, well, it's essentially, I mean, essentially.
I can agree with that.
Okay.
It's that figure. Okay, so we're, if that's converted, we're ingredients there on that.
Yeah, okay.
No change.
What's that?
No change to what you had in your report.
No change to acres, just the crop type.
Change in acres, crop, just changing crop type.
Yeah.
Bridge bank come out of retained.
Regarding the bridge planks, um, the as part of the contract, the contractor is responsible for removal of debris within the work limits and the, the district right of way. Um, a it would have been a welcome courtesy to have contacted the landowners before those were removed, disposed of, whatever became of them. However, having been stored in the, in the right of way, it's my opinion that the contractor wasn't obligated to contact anyone before they disposed of what they deemed to be rubbish or, or debris. And that's, I, I understand, they were, uh, and I, I have a photo from the, the drone flight before the work was conducted. I, I understand, it's not like the planks were stored haphazardly. Um, but they, they do appear to be discarded or bridge planks, I mean, they're, they are, they are there, they're, they're, they're stacked up, but they're they were stacked to be used at a later time. And I, and I understand that, but then they were also stored in drainage districts right of way, where when the contractor comes through, he, he's tasked with getting rid of, but we, we've had so if I have my pick up there, I've, I've seen, I've seen all vehicles removed, taken away, the jack lowered up. When it's, uh, any sort of debris, as it can say, the old, old kitchen appliances, uh, water heaters that are set on the side of a, a ditch. I mean, I've seen, uh, tractor weights. I've seen contractors get rid of tractor weights and, uh, that have been stored in the district right of way. And it it, it's, it's been held as part of the, of the project. So that's that's my, my thoughts on, on that.
One, one thing I would address out of the letter, um, and the letter and other places been mentioned, communication and no phone call about this or that. I guess for both of you here, um, I feel you were well informed of the project, the official notification that went to everyone. I personally visited with you guys about the project before the public hearing. I had multiple phone calls with you, Tim, about it as it was in progress. I met with you within days or a week-ish of this incident happening. Um, it was never brought to my attention, um, prior to, so I guess I feel there was a lot of communication and maybe not this specific topic, but you were well aware that excavators would be coming through at a moment's notice. So I don't feel that's negligence um, on the part of any contractor. Um, are in conversations with our attorney, um, as Tyler kind of laid out there, it is drainage district right of way. It's not a machine shed on the side of a ditch. Um, the district has the right and responsibility to perform the work necessary, so.
On the other hand, it would have been nice if they would have informed that they were going to dispose of their property before they did it. I'm not saying that they did it wrong or right, I'm just saying sometimes communication is very nice.
The other side of that too is, how do they know it's their property? I mean, as they were saying, things have been disposed of in the, you know, right of way. You know, is there anything they're posting saying that this was property, you know, of so-and-so or anything like that, you know, are, are they? When they find things like that, are they supposed to go to the landowners each and every time and ask them, is this yours? Do you want it? You know, can you move it kind of thing? I mean.
Bridge bank don't just, just appear on the side of the ditch bank, so.
No, but, but they had, they had been there for five years. Um, if something was going to be done with them, they very easily could have been moved somewhere else.
Actually, the, uh, the bridge was removed in twenty nineteen, uh, and we did not sleep on our rights. We found that the property had been hauled off. In fact, we asked, where is the property? Bring it back. And, uh, we got some very, very questionable responses. Response we got was that it had been destroyed, which seems to me that's, uh, dubious. I mean, that's, uh, you know, we were a phone call away. Tim McNerney's phone call away, uh, we went and moved the property. Uh, we didn't leave the property there in technically for, for it to be there forever. So, uh, the property, as the photo showed, was clearly in two basically separate groupings. Uh, I dispute whether it was within right of way. But we didn't get a clear answer. We got pushback from the subcontractor, we got pushback from the supervisor. And I believe that this, uh, you know, I made a demand letter to the, uh, to the contractor, the party. He said it hadn't been, all been resolved. So I spoke with Mr. Jars, uh, thinking that this would have been resolved in our favor. Uh, there's, there's costs involved. The business property that we intended to use for a separate structure on the farm. We weren't just leaving it out there on the ditch bank. Our conversations with supervisor had nothing to do with the property, that's true. We did meet with him maybe a couple of years ago. But we would have moved the property had we felt it would be appropriate. We asked for the property to be returned and they said it's been destroyed. These are nineteen eighty planks, re-subtracted planks. This is valuable property. It's, I currently I take umbrage with the accusation that this is some kind of debris. That's ridiculous. So that's a lot of money taken and we're speaking, we're speaking on indemnification form, very simple. And I was under the impression that this has been resolved. I was gonna bring a lawsuit, but I was told it has been resolved in our favor. So it's kind of a double whammy here. I, I feel that this is complete, uh, miscarriage of justice. That's all I can say right now.
Who notified you that it was resolved?
We, we had conversations. I said we'd bring it up when we had to hear closing at the here and we would try to work with him. And it is his personal property that was left there. I think he should have been notified before they destroyed his personal properties.
Right. And I don't disagree with that.
And the contractor took off with it without saying anything. I, I still think it's his personal property that was destroyed.
Um, after all this came up, um, at multiple conversations with our attorney and there was a difference of opinion from Jim Hudson, our legal counsel. And I think the picture in the drone flight would verify very easily that it was located within the right of way. Um.
I don't think you needed, it needed to be handled the way it was because if you have somebody's property sitting there, you would probably inform them that it should be moved without destroying it.
I mean, if I came across
I would something like that.
A pile of treated planks.
I would, I would have called first.
Two, it's a, hey. At least a question. I mean, that's just laziness on the contractor. I, um, I, even if he's legally in the right, I mean.
I still think it should come out of the contract, it's retained.
Contract, yeah. Should have called the owner and said, hey, this stuff's had to be moved.
It was not debris, it was an aspect.
Not, you know, junky shards of wood like along the ditch. It's, I don't. Did you want to look at it? So I had then as coming out with the contractor retainage, that sounds like a concession there. That is the that is all of the additional claims that I have received.
Anything else to do in the open meeting?
I do not believe so.
But we can close the he the hearing? Chair, is this on DD four?
Yeah.
And visually, when this project started out, Mr. Stacker was was going for Mccarty, get the bid. He said that if Mccarty prevailed, that Luthall Excavating was not going to get any selling work. I want to know from Mr. Stacker, how Luthall Excavating got work.
I don't I don't believe that's a direct quote from me. The I believe the position I took at the time, which I would still support or be in that same position is that's not my decision. As a board member, we do not choose who contractors sub with. Lubinthall Excavating was not the only subcontractor on this project either. And none of those decisions were mine. So yes, that's all I have to say.
Hey, Mr. Stacker, are you receiving any payments of any kind?
No.
On the Stein project, they're at the end of time, what Luthall pay for the rocks?
The landowner is getting paid for all damage claims.
Well, I'm talking about the contractor. On the Stein project, I want to know who your pay, who the district's paying for moving on the Stein project.
The claim that was turned in by Ed Stein, he chose who he hired for that, not me. Charlie Lubinthall.
Working for Charlie Lubinthall. Are you working for Charlie Lubinthall?
No, not for that.
He planned your project.
Yeah, I hire him. That's a choice.
You pay him back.
Was there a question there? Yes, I hire him.
Okay, one another thing I noticed is this for you, Mr. Stacker. Why does Luthall Excavating have a bunch of good corrugated metal pipe in his yard along Route nine west of Sweet City? On the DD four, we get five. That pipe was pretty damn good to me. So why or why he had that pipe though?
I don't control his business in any way, shape or form. Don't know what inventory he has on hand, but I don't know how you could say that that's specifically from this project. And all of those have been documented with pictures and GPS coordinates and been verified. So.
So you got pictures of the pipe that even.
That's a question for the engineer. He okayed and
That was.
All the fact that was put in.
Yeah.
We have the original drone flight.
We have an cascade for renewal or replacement of any pipes that were not removed and replaced. And that delivers a bag of this corrugated pipe that's in the yard. And the district compensated for that. Yeah, the district did not pay for any over order of pipes that they and that was part of the the right, the pipe that he moved from. The the new pipe that they had that they didn't use, it was a huge pipe. It looks like it looks like it didn't even have to be replaced. They shouldn't sell that pipe. The what was under the ground, I can't speak to. Where they were placed for having been broken, those got placed. What what's done with the rest of the pipe, it becomes a contractor asset. So contractor did not compensate for any corrugated pipe removed. No. Hey, I think you had went through the role of pipe issue, so we won't go through here. But here again, I will quote course of D127 requires the trust these to for any coins every two years. And you're in violation of that loan, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, fifty-six cents on this project. That's about an additional eight thousand dollar cost to the district. And most of that money goes to the bulk maker exactly Lubinthall.
Well, there's a problem there, Joe. We can't pay people if we don't have the money.
Well, that's why you're supposed to spread it. That's why you spread it.
You don't spread projects until they're done, right?
That is what the law says.
Joe, there is money spread on Drain four, open ditch for this year. That's that's probably as simple of an answer as there needs to be here. There is three hundred thousand dollars being assessed to Drain four this year.
Yeah, one hundred and thirty-six, which should have been spread last.
And some of that FEMA projects always throw a monkey wrench in all the warrants.
Yep.
That's some of that's beyond our control, Joe.
You want us to assess one point five million and then have the money from FEMA sitting in the account for X number of years till the next project happens? Just a question.
Not one billion dollars, but surely not more than it is.
Oh, that's not how the process works.
Okay, Mr. Stacker, you probably could do run with everything you want to do. Or take yourself a BD four line eleven and serve by BD four ditch. This last days, we've had access to tape and go into the engineering fees of all men and they go create a town, but stay with the Florida plan. BD four line eleven, which is served by BD four, which can bring them to BD eight. We know she did the game for the board, some requests and BD eight is a
No.
Joe, we're going to stop you right now. Don't apply to this project. So we're not.
Listen, we're going to give them fill on DD four line left.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Through your shot, yeah.
Yes.
George, I just didn't really get a sort of good answer on the converted bridge lines.
It's going to come out of the when we make the motion right now, we can't do it in post. I'll second Mr. Stacker's motion. Do a roll call vote, please.
Black.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Yes. Now, we have a motion on all of the
The damage claim.
Damage claims and retainage claims.
As as discussed.
As discussed, let's make a separate motion on the retainage claim from McNerky. I'm sorry. Do we need to have a total amount or can you add that up later?
I I think it can be I think it can be added up. It'll need to be obviously removed from what the pay application for the retainage that gets sent to them is. But per 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 my notes, and maybe you can confirm what you have here as well, the values I have. And and I have broken down my landowner, but I have three thousand forty-nine dollars, twenty-seven cents, one thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents, one thousand five hundred dollars, one thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars, two thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars, one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, three hundred seventy-five dollars and six thousand five hundred dollars.
That's all coming out of there.
That those are the amounts I have coming out of the retention.
I would make that motion for all those damages together as described.
Second. Second by Carter. Any more discussion on the motion? There are none of those in favor of the motion. Please say aye. Aye. Close. Motion carried unanimous. Crop damage and other damages.
Crop damages and other damages, I it's it's tough to put an actual dollar amount on, but we have a number of changes of crop type and some actual dollar amounts that were supported in the claims with receipts. There will need to be a revised completion document that dictates all of that. I'll drop those off very similar this week or very similar next week, like I did this week for the revisions.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to take care of all other damages.
I'd make that motion for the changes.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? There are none of those in favor of the motion. Please say aye. Close. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else you'd like to cover on DD four, open ditch?
No, I do not. That thirty days may be enough to get it all turned around. It just can't be any sooner than that. So it it hasn't been sent out to them because we didn't know the value. We were going to wait.
Yep.
So.
Richard, you add your hand up.
You just have one more question, just and probably go to Kyle. This is back this is about three or four or five years ago, maybe. But anyhow, I I checked periodically to see what my drainage disasters are. And there was a project two zero zero one. I had trouble getting any information and finally I was told I had to talk to Kyle. After talking, he told me it was twenty thousand dollars that was getting the district at a time because there was going to be some some expenses coming on Drain four and he just kind of wanted to split it up. And then just wondering, has that been spent? Does that come off of this project now? What became of those funds from project two zero zero one for twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
That's.
It it was so it was just a general dollar that was assessed to the district. So it would have been included with the funds for Drain four as a whole.
How does that work? You're telling me that at the time?
There there was outstanding balances before that too.
You indicated there were going to be some expenses coming up. He wanted to soften the load. For some reason, nobody wanted to talk about it. This was charged after you took off.
I don't have a good answer.
I have specifics on that.
Other than there's an outstanding balance, the two cleanouts that happened before around twenty year waivers. Two different, so there's outstanding balance existing on Drain four. So a minor collection, twenty thousand to soften possible coming expenses for engineers. There's already existing outstanding balance there.
Besides, it's expected him to soften the load on part of this this deal now. So let's see the place. Just curious.
Go ahead, Don.
Project secretary indicated that if he didn't spread this, he one point five million. He spread thirty hundred thousand of this next coming tax. So are you anticipating then at one million, two hundred thousand, are you paid for by FEMA? Do you have a guarantee? What what is he going to pay on this project, I guess?
So with the paperwork, finally getting the projects combined as the sites were laid out originally. We are our consultant and actually I I'll call him now so he can explain this. Let's see if he answers.
Yes, sir.
Hey, we are in the board meeting here. We're finished up with the public hearing portion of this, but Don McGregor had a question about the FEMA funds and I didn't know if you wanted to run through some of that with the process and the dollar amounts and all that, or what you could share.
And I went to the office this morning and basically, you know, Kyle and your district, we had the two projects.
Yep.
And we combined them. Basically, the combination of the two project was about one million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand and some change.
That's their estimate. Yep.
Yep, we we did a small reimbursement request early on. I think it was with Mccarty for about two hundred some thousand. Now, I am in the process of putting a reimbursement request. I have asked the state to allow us the full seventy-five percent of the federal share, which is nine hundred and fifty thousand and change. Of course, we've already borrowed, you know, we've already reimbursed two hundred some thousand. So I'm asking for six hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars to be reimbursed. Now, the state can approve that amount or they could just say, hey, we're only going to do what we normally do, which is seventy-five percent of the federal share. With that being the case, we would adjust the reimbursement request to four hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. But if I'm not mistaken, Kyle, the project is basically completed.
Actually, with so with our with our action in the last few minutes, the project is closed. We will have documents for all that shortly, so then we can proceed with closeout.
Right, but closeouts right now are taking so many months to actually complete. My thought is to take every penny that we're allowed, let's get it in our hands. And then that way, we're only waiting for a smaller balance to actually close out the account instead of waiting for the full nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're looking for. So like I said, I've asked the state to give us the full federal share. I don't see any reason why they won't. But if they don't, either way, mid-July, you're either going to get a check for about four hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and change, or we're going to get a check for six hundred and seventy-four thousand and change.
And then the project, just for everyone's knowledge here, the project will get closed on actuals, not FEMA's estimate at the end of the closeout, correct?
Correct. Correct. And then whatever the balance is from as much as we've reimbursed, of course, we'll receive seventy-five percent of that federal share and the state will pay their additional ten percent. And then we can officially close out the project once FEMA gets it closed, which, like I said, has been taking months and months. So my thought was let's take our cash and get it to the bank while we can.
Yep.
Is there any other questions you might have as far as the the projects are concerned? Is there any other questions you might have as far as the, the projects are concerned?
Probably didn't get further engineering because they had all the profiles on this ditch plus some five years earlier.
Sounds like that's all the FEMA stuff, so, um.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
State to get the actual combination of the projects, uh, into their system.
Yep.
I've got the reimbursement request all built. I just have to wait to submit it till they get that completed. I'm hoping that's done this week and then, uh, we'll basically move forward with the reimbursement request.
Sounds good. Appreciate it and we will talk to you later.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Hard to follow that conversation, so are you anticipating one point two million dollar for FEMA? Where are you actually anticipating getting?
So, are. I don't have the exact cost, but the total construction cost plus engineering and damages and publication and all those expenses that go into it. I believe are a little over one point five million at this point, so yes, eighty five percent of that I expect to be paid by FEMA at the end of the day. Federal and state combined.
Shouldn't anticipate any more spreads for this project, I think.
So, rough math, if you do one point five million times eighty five percent, that's one point two seven five million, so.
Sounds good.
With interest, we should be within a margin of error, close. Not gonna say exact. Depends on time and a lot of factors, but we should be close.
Then I, one other question, I, I. Concerned with the project because you weren't buying right away, at the time. Now it's indicating that by, uh, right away afterwards is actually what you're gonna do. That's not necessarily fair to the other landlords along this issue, contributing property in this project. So, you know, bear in mind what you're gonna do there and what's at the cost of district.
And that's, I, I can speak a little bit. There was the, the request for the compensation for lost acres. Again, at the completion hearing, that's not the only time and place to consider that. That, that request could be, could be made and considered, and I think what you're saying is. Be careful how that is considered and that's, that's, uh, I think that's, that's why.
Oh, if you start playing right away, you change the dynamic.
And, and I think it would need, i- if it were to be, my opinion would be as if. Right away were to be looked at for this, it would need to be all encompassing of the project or, or not at all. Uh, so it wouldn't just be, in my opinion, and you're, you're right, it wouldn't be. Fair and equitable to those just for having filed their response versus those that, that didn't. Just kind of accepted that.
I've missed the rest of the projects that did in the past where we wasn't ready that way ahead of time. That's not, none of this project is going. It's not getting the true project cost either. That's all, just all it didn't do.
Anything else for DD four, open ditch? Repair.
I guess I would, I would speak to that. There was a lot of dissatisfaction with the previous project. Conveyed to me, um, in multiple ways and Bolton and Mink being. A local business here in town with an office in Algonah, made it. A substantial difference in how this was administered and the time requirements involved with. Um, the FEMA side of things, all the, all the work that is encompassed in that. Was a huge time saver, um, in regards to how that was handled locally, so. Um, that would be a few highlights I would share, but that's not all the reasons by any means.
There's no further questions. We will go to our repair request.
Just go, go and come back. When we get, when we get going at least. If we're, if we're gonna go, they need to go out to the hall or something here. Don, Pat, Don, Joe, Rich.
So we can finish our meetings. We, we still aren't done yet. We got some more work to do. Thank you guys for coming. Go ahead, Carter.
Alright, I've got a, a repair request from PAC, on PAC one, uh, number sixty. This is in section five of Carroll Township, um, uh, lateral C, there's a broken tile washout on the lane. From Byron Antler. Not sure what. Washout on lane. Like his lane?
The, yeah, the tile goes through his.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, I see. Okay. I had nothing, so, okay.
Kyle, you got one?
Yeah, I got a couple here. Um, sixty one Springfield, section sixteen. Approximately six hundred feet plugged with willow tree roots, needs to be replaced with non-perforated for deeming will be. Is this Smith, the contractor you were talking about, or is that, oh, Ken or something?
Oh, that's a gun tractor. That's dug it up already.
Dug it up, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, number sixty two, Brad Arndor for lead yard thirty two. Southwest of Hog Building, it's about hundred feet marked with yellow flags. You know, if this is broken or you know what the deal is. I mean, I can call Brad too, but. Okay.
I think.
I'll talk to him about it, figure it out.
Yeah, I got number fifty nine. It's a broken tile in, um, section drainage district eighty six. Needs repair and I'm gonna have Grant, you send it to Grant, have him fix it. Do I have a motion for the supervisors taking care of there? Jack, so I have a second to Jack's motion.
Josh second.
Josh second.
Repair request.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oh, motion carried unanimous. I think we had a long day. Anything else, Marge, for dreams?
Have we done the drone flight on PAC one yet?
Um, I don't know if it's been done, but I know Tyler, I know Tyler's gonna schedule.
Okay, okay.
Time with our auditor.
We're gonna talk about the time sheet software again and then we reschedule the department head meeting. Or right after the regular board meeting next. So we had a couple of departments that couldn't be there to do it today, so. We rescheduled it till next week. Um. I got an email from Justin Statts, who's with Iowa Regional Housing Authority. I think I. Overed that email to all of you guys, but I'm wondering if we had anybody. That we could appoint to that position, um.
I've been looking around and been talking with people and just haven't found anybody in, interested yet. Uh, well, I think I did find one person interested, but they are too busy.
I had a person come to mind when I saw the email come out, um, but I figured I'd wait to see if we had anyone else, but. I can try and do some research on that too.
Dr. Luke this morning, he said he'd do it if we couldn't find anybody else.
Luke Snyder.
Yeah. Okay. That's. That's satisfactory with the rest of you.
I, I'll maybe ask the one person that came to mind for me, just to see if they'd be interested or not. I don't have any opposition to Luke, but. Probably be good.
What about next week? Busy.
No, I already told you.
You don't wanna talk again next week?
The, uh, department head meeting.
That's okay.
Jack, do you have any meetings?
Uh, the only thing I'm gonna say is, you got an email on the pit, south town or off of pit, that's the not heads. So you guys all got that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, have wellness tomorrow.
Gosh, nothing for me.
Um, no specific committee assignments. Uh, I gave you all paper from Iowa Drainage District Association. House file seven fourteen was just signed into law, which. Clarify, basically clarifies the definition, um, for railroads responsibility in regards to drainage infrastructure. So now drain tile is, um, incorporated in that, which specifically for drain ninety. Lateral one is a four hundred plus thousand dollar impact to that district, so. Um, Spencer and I have been talking here recently, uh, multiple times with the other repairs needed there. But I was gonna check with Marge after the meeting was done. He, he said he should be available next week to be on the agenda. To talk about our status with drain ninety and take action to, um. Address this law change and stuff, so. We'll probably have that on the agenda if it works for schedule and stuff, but, but that's a quick update there, cuz that's, that's a big deal.
So this basically made, um, has it, so the railroad companies will take on the responsibility of like the repairs and things like that.
Yeah, and, um.
Gotta get him to do it.
Yeah, it, it'll still take some work to get him to do it, but with the definition of the law being changed. Um, to clarify the Supreme Court decision, which seemed to exempt, exempt them at the time. Um. It will, they'll basically be forced to. I mean, it's, it's the law, that's what they have to operate under, so.
Basically too, right? So they, so you don't just assess the entire drainage district, but not the railroad companies.
I don't, I don't.
Responsible for their drainage and what they get.
They're, they're just responsible for their right of way. Uh, I don't know that it changes anything with the assessments. I don't think.
Only if you change assessment schedule.
Well, yeah, um, but the house file, I don't think that changes assessments specifically, but it changes. It changes what falls under their responsibility and that's a substantial impact and that's just one district. I mean, we've got other places in this county that that will significantly affect as well, so.
Sheet Joe handed out today doesn't belong in the file, but it had nothing to do with the DD four open ditch flame trunk. So I wouldn't bother to put it into the drainage file. You can burn it. Got a drainage meeting tomorrow, that's all I got. Didn't have anything this week. Got it's fun and entertaining, except telephone calls. Anything else? Motion to adjourn, Carter?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Twelve forty two. Later.